I call the Monday, January 27th, 2020 work session meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. Madam Clark, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Semus.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. I'll ask everybody to put their ringer on silent, so if you feel need to talk, please talk in the lobby.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. I'm going to reverse the order of our presentations tonight so that the Chief can give her presentation and get back out into the community for a manner of which they are handling. The first presentation, Chief Angela Green, will present the Public Safety 2019 Year in Review. This presentation will highlight the quality of life enhancement initiatives to reduce incidents against persons, introduce new innovative programs in 2020 that will enrich the department's goals of reducing crime and enhancing the quality of life for our residents. The Portsmouth Police Department recognizes the need for partnership and collaboration with various city agencies, outside organizations, to include law enforcement, social and research partners, as well as the community to have a long-term impact in reducing incidents within our communities and improving the residents' quality of life. The second presentation, Minority Women and Small Business Enterprise. In June of 2019, you were given a briefing on the city's Minority and Women's Own Business Enterprise, MWBE program. At that time, you requested that an update be provided to you during January of 2020. This evening, you will be briefed by the city's purchasing officer, Mr. Michael Ammons, on the city's MWBE program. Third, Smart Portsmouth. This presentation, Mr. Daniel Jones, Chief Information Officer, will provide a holistic review of Smart Portsmouth, the tasks completed in those that are in progress, and next steps of the smart city transformation for the city of Portsmouth. As you are aware, the current budget theme is smart city, and this presentation will provide tasks on how we will continue our smart city progress. And lastly, Crawford Gateway Revitalization. The city's downtown redevelopment rehabilitation strategy includes improving the livability downtown by focusing on the quality of experience and opportunities for open space amenities. The rendering of the roundabout and a parcel at 609 and 615 Washington Street you will see tonight will set the stage for future development and enhance the downtown experience for our residents and visitors. Chief Green.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, members of City Council. This is going to be a brief snapshot of our public safety year review, talk about the successes that we had in 2019 and plans that we put together, and also plans that we're looking beyond into 2020 to make sure that we are developing some programs in conjunction with other law enforcement agencies, social services, mental health, courts, in order to bring about and enriching life for our youth that we have in our city and beyond. So, just want to give us a breakdown. City of Portsmouth, this map over here is the breakdown of homicides in the entire city. Want to show you, they're color-coded for a reason. Yellow and gray at the top represent the first six months of the year, where we have 14 homicides, first six months. The last, bottom, the black and two blacks, green and red, is the last six months of 2019, where we only had two homicides. So again, we'll talk about the plans that we put in place briefly, when we noticed an increase in homicides, mostly in this area, 212, 112, and 111, that we were able to reverse that trend of increases a homicide for the last six months to have two, and by the end of the year, actually have a 16% reduction in homicides compared to last year, with a 69% clearance rate in homicides. Again, in April, when we started to see an influx of homicides, in the first couple of months, we decided that we need to do something in the Swanson Homes area, Dale Homes, and Lincoln Park area, or South Side Gardens area now, to, again, bring that trend down. So what we decided to do was bring the state police in to help augment our manpower. They came in at the end of August, left the end of October. That was only 24 working days that they were here. In 24 working days, they were able to make these seizures and these arrests. We're not hanging our hats on the arrests and seizures, but we got a lot of intel out of this time that we know we can utilize to have long-term positive effects in the city of Portsmouth. Biggest thing is, is once we realized we had a gang nexus, which was June 5th, we realized we had two homegrown gangs in Dale Homes and South Side Gardens, that were having issues, violence against each other, but also out in the surrounding areas like Chesapeake and Norfolk. We now developed a gang intelligence unit to partner with our street crimes unit and Virginia State Police to target those three areas specifically with the homegrown gang problem. What we found out is we arrested 34 documented gang members during that time. Forty-one percent of those gang members were juveniles, under the age of 18, youngest being 13 years old. Of the adults arrested, most of them were 18 to 19 years old, just out of high school. The oldest we arrested was 25 years old. Nine times, we had juveniles arrested multiple times. We had some juveniles arrested four times within this four-month period. And these juveniles were arrested on serious charges, concealed handguns, and attempt murder. So obviously, we realized we can't arrest our way out of the problem. Arresting them is not going to solve the problem. We have a more deep-rooted issue that we have to look at. We also wanted to show that because we took so many illegal guns off the streets, we were also able to get a decrease, not just in homicides, but also gunshot wounds. So these are people that were shot, but did not succumb to their injuries. They still live. So we were able to get a 7% reduction in people that were shot by the end of the year. Again, just want to show the map, what we looked at for the entire year, and this is the entire year right now, from January 1st through June 30th, and then the last six months of the year, once we implemented our plan. This was our focus area, Swanson Homes, South Side Gardens, Dale Homes, where the majority of most of our homicides, six out of the 14 that occurred during that time, happened in those three areas. Once we put our plan in place, by the end of the year, the last six months, we were able to get 100% reduction of homicides, none happening in our target areas, with only two happening in the last six months. One of them happened on August 6th, which was cleared by arrest. It was domestic-related. Stepson got into a physical argument with his stepfather in the house, and subsequently shot him, where he succumbed to his injuries. And then the last one was December 24th, where we had a homicide of an individual that knew people were targeting him to rob him because of his illegal activities. And after leaving an apartment, it was an attempt robbery that went bad. So because of these efforts, 100% in our focus area, 70% citywide. So, armed with the new intelligence that we had, that obviously we have a much bigger problem than we thought with our juvenile gangs, we said, what are we going to do going forward? We know we can't arrest our way out of the problem. So we're looking at prevention, intervention, and suppression, which is an arrest to be the last resort. We want to place heavily emphasis on prevention and intervention. We started our gang presentations with our gang unit and SROs in all of the Portsmouth Public Middle Schools in December. We've already completed Churchland Middle School, currently Encraddick Middle School. By mid-February, we would have done Waters, all three middle schools. We have the GREAT Program, which is a national program, gang resistance, education, and training, based out of Washington, D.C., that are coming down here to do training, a week-long training, with our SROs and our gang detectives. We also had Chesapeake and Norfolk at the table, because again, we're looking at a holistic approach, because we know the gangs are in Chesapeake and Norfolk that were going back and forth. So we want to make sure, not just Portsmouth, but we're reaching out to the other jurisdictions as well. So that training will take place in March. Then, outside of school, obviously, we want to continue fostering positive relationships between the police and the juveniles. We have our spring break camp, PALS summer camp, still tutoring our first and second graders. And then, a new thing we want to introduce with adults, not just juveniles, is the city manager's vision for whistle your way to safety. That's what the city manager, looking at inexpensive but effective means of protection and visibility for our citizens. We looked at the whistle, which was implemented in the 1800s through Scotland Yard, in use of London, police officers, a way to communicate that they need help or danger in the area. And because of that, whistles are still used to this day with law enforcement, to signal distracted drivers when we're doing traffic enforcement, or large crowds to disperse them because of the loud noise. So, we already purchased whistles that go on your keychain. For anybody that wants one, you put it on your keychain, you always have it with you. You're able to signal, or get the attention --
Okay.
-- get the attention of bystanders, because if you blow that, somebody's looking, somebody's going to call for help. Most of the times, offenders will flee the area. So we've already started a campaign with that. We've been going to our community meetings, civic league meetings, and other meetings that we've had with apartment managers, gave them out to a lot of property managers, and we have a video that hopefully should be coming out shortly, that Mr. Pace and his video production team are in the final stages of doing that. Also, we noticed in 2019, we had an increase in sexual assaults. Increases, obviously, females meeting males on our these social websites, and then they meet up with these males, and unfortunately, something happens that they don't want to happen and report it the next day. Another thing that we're seeing is a lot of these females are going out to our local restaurants and bars, becoming heavily intoxicated, or utilizing drugs, leaving with strangers, and then the next day, reporting incidents that are happening. So, we want to put out a campaign, flyers, obviously through social media, reiterating protection and prevention tips for them. We also want to put flyers in the high schools, the guidance counselor offices, the nurses' offices, to try to reinforce some of those things we think are common sense, and also where our local restaurants and bars, putting it in their bathrooms, in a conspicuous area, when females or males utilize the bathroom, again, reminding them about consent and how to protect yourself from sexual assaults. Intervention part. This is our newest programs that we want to implement, that we think are going to have long-term effects, positive effects, with the city of Portsmouth views. We want to do a program that we came up with the name Respect, refocusing education with students and police by enlisting courts and training. We want to have a true alternative and divergent program with the courts, that when we have juveniles that are exhibiting misdemeanor criminal activity, like simple assault, disorderly trespassing, we don't want to do the school-to-prison pipeline. We want to stop and curb that behavior and put them on a positive path. So we want, instead of charging them, the courts to say, you have to go through this nine-week program with police officers, that police officers are field experts, teach this curriculum of classes with gang prevention, conflict resolution, healthy lifestyle choices. And the parents have to participate in three of those weeks. First week is the introduction with the roles and expectations, why you're here, what we expect from you. Third week will be team building with your student. Last week would be graduation. And obviously, through all of this, we'll do a dress for success. We'll take the children, girls and males, teach them how to tie-tie, buy them a suit, buy them a dress, so that they will look nice and pretty and presentable during graduation, and hopefully, a field trip to D.C. to see the MLK museum and monument. Obviously, we need to, SROs will be involved, courts, Commonwealth attorney, social services, mental health, and the schools. I already have Commonwealth attorney that is 100% on board. I meet with the courts on Wednesday, and Dr. Bracy tomorrow to talk about this. So hopefully, this will be something we can implement for long-term resolutions. Then the next thing, is Officer Juvenile Justice Delinquency Program, their gang model. This will be focused mostly through the city manager's office, because of her passion and dedication to the youth, and the implementation of an outreach worker, that we don't want an outreach worker connected to the police department to be an employee of the police department. We want an outreach worker that can connect with these juveniles who are either in a gang or teetering about being in a gang. So the outreach worker will be able to go out into their areas, into their homes, and the children that they're talking to won't have a fear of them snitching or retaliation, and they'll be able to talk to them in their terms, in real-life experiences, about how to stay on a straight and narrow path. And a huge part of that will be workforce, that we'll have to have our businesses on board with us, that they'll be able to employ them, because we know a lot of these juveniles get involved with gangs and criminal activity, just for their basic necessities of life, for food and clothing. So we obviously have to be able to provide them with other healthy options. So these are programs that we know will have long-term positive effects. But in the meantime, the suppression or arrest part, we have to remove the violent offenders from the community. It will be a while before these programs, we start seeing a positive effect. So the Virginia State Police are returning next month to assist us. Another thing we're looking at is stratified policing. And I will throw this out when I introduce stratified policing at the chief's forum that I had on Wednesday. I had a concerned citizen that stated that there's opinions out there from the NAACP and ACLU against stratified policing. So I just want to put it out there that that citizen was misinformed or confused, because the only thing NAACP and ACLU has put opinions out against is predictive policing. Predictive policing is offender-based. Stratified policing does not utilize that. And actually, Dr. Rachel Santos, one of the creators, has written a article or a chapter in her book agreeing with the NAACP and ACLU's opinion about predictive policing that utilizes offender-based, data-driven evidence to target certain individuals. So Dr. Rachel Santos agrees not to use predictive policing, and they do not use that at all. This is a comprehensive approach that looks at organizing police officers from all ranks, from officer all the way up to chief, on how to combat problems in certain areas before they become big problems. And they use areas, not people. Their data is driven on areas, not people. And on top of that, they don't go into areas unless individuals want them in the area. Individuals are asking for police help and police assistance to reduce crime in the area. So that's what stratified policing is about, and it's been used since 2011, endorsed by the National Association Chiefs of Police and Department of Justice, and is in the Evidence-Based Police Hall of Fame for all the strategies that they have put in place since 2011. So those are the things that we're excited about, to start implementing hopefully in the city of Portsmouth soon, so we can see a holistic approach to combat the juvenile issues that we're seeing right now. And I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Shannon?
Well, first of all, a comment. You know, I attended the forum the other night, and I want to congratulate you for putting out an informative forum. It was very well-attended, and I think you did a superb job.
Thank you, sir.
In delivery. And I just wanted to congratulate you on that.
Thank you.
A couple of things that come to mind for me. I know we used to have the reset walks in the community, which some of this kind of includes that, I think. So I just wanted to know where we were with that, with the reset walks. One. Secondly, I understand that we have, I don't know if it's a problem in our community, but we have house parties that pop up in places, and they create environments for bad things to happen.
Absolutely.
And so I didn't know if you had a strategy for tackling that issue. I'm sure you do, Chief. But the other thing I wanted to share with you, I've had the opportunity to talk with Chief Boone over in Norfolk, and I'm really excited that we're collaborating regionally, because you know what happens is, when the bad guys run from Norfolk, they run over to Portsmouth, and vice versa. So I'm glad that we're working with that. And the last thing I'll say, I'm sure on the workforce side, you'll be getting with Sean Avery and the folks at Hampton Roads Workforce Council, because they have a number of different initiatives. And I know that they would like to speak with you about it. The director of Youth Services over there is Christina Brooks, Hampton Roads Workforce Council. Great job.
Thank you, sir. And as far as reset walks, we definitely still do that. Every incident that we have in the city, we do it. The last one on Avondale, obviously, we just completed that. So we make sure we are 100% complete in any traumatic incident that happens in the city. We go out and do a reset walk. As for the after-hours parties, we are very aware of that. We are now looking at a more comprehensive plan, sometimes involving one particular individual. We have federal agencies that we're working on, because unfortunately, some of our laws, which is a misdemeanor for a body house, that it's a class four, it's not even jail time, it's usually just a fine.
Right.
Nothing happens.
Sure.
So we're trying to work with other partners that have a little bit more teeth in their bite, but we are also looking at social media to see when they're advertising, and these parties pop up, to try to talk to either the homeowner or the party organizer before the event happens, and that, when it happens, putting a lot more pressure on it. But you're absolutely right. It's just the incident waiting to happen with all these after-hour parties. So we're staying on top of that, sir. Did I answer your two questions?
All right, Bill, Scott question.
Yes, sir.
Chief, every time that we have a state police initiative, it produces some terrific results. But what can we do to do that same kind of --
Without bringing them in?
-- adoption in-house?
Yes.
Is that a matter of increased feet on the street, or is it special expertise that they bring in that we don't have?
I would say it's a little bit of both, that right now, we are utilizing them to assist us with manpower. So it does help us out, having the extra personnel that we don't have. But then, they are coming in with a different set of eyes, and a different way of looking at things, where as they have their expertise, a lot of times, in vehicle stops, and things about the vehicle that our officers get to learn from them, about probable calls and things like that, that they utilize. But I would say the majority of it right now is manpower issues. We use them to augment.
And speaking of manpower, where do we stand on the number of police officers ready to deploy?
We are about 40, in our 40s, for vacancies, but we currently have an application process open. We are currently testing individuals, and our next academy will be in April. So hopefully, we're looking to have a good number of individuals in that April academy.
Are we closing the gap? Forty's a lot of people. Are we going into overtime, or...?
Overtime right now. Yes, sir.
Okay. The other thing, on your Respect Initiative, that sounds good. How are we going to measure success on that?
So what we'll look at is, when we get it implemented, hopefully, we will be able to partner with one of our colleges, maybe ODU, to do some research, so that we can start following it and have it evidence-based. But we'll start looking at it, more or less, from in the schools, we'll start, if misconduct has gone down, and then also in the communities, because we know usually whatever happens in the community is brought into the schools, and vice versa. But a lot of that will also depend on our juvenile crimes. If we see a decrease in juveniles committing the crimes that we see now, like burglaries and larcenies, and some of our aggravated assaults and firearm charges.
So we're going to track it through a percentile, not that Phil Moody was caught doing something, and he's a junior in high school, and you're not going to track the individual, see if that --
Oh, absolutely not. Yeah. Everything we do is about by numbers. We'll look at the holistic in the entire city, with specific crimes that we know juveniles have been prevalent in, to see if there's a decrease now, since the implementation of that with juveniles. But definitely not on a specific person, but overall city-wide crimes.
So when would the program actually be implemented?
So we are hoping, once we're able to get all the partners on board, that we'll be able to implement it, starting identifying children in the summertime, implement it by the fall of this school year coming up, as the latest. But again, it's, we have to get all of the stakeholders in place, and everybody together before we can implement it. But at the latest, by the start of the fall school year.
Okay. Then I'll say a hand up over here. All right, Lisa.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Great presentation. And I know that we read in our City Council brief, City Manager, about the incentive that was being offered. It's the second part of Councilman Moody's question. So I was just wondering, was there any incentive or any kind of marketing to recruit more minorities, women, to the force with that gap?
Yes. So we do have a incentive, a retention incentive program that is out there, that hopefully will be implemented in the month of February. But also, as far as the recruiting, we do have a recruiting plan for our billboards, social media, to attract, obviously, as many qualified, diverse candidates that we can.
Other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, Mr. Ammons will come forward with the Minority Women and Small Business Update.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Mike Ammons. I'm the purchasing officer for the city, and I'm here to present you an update on the city's MWBE program. First, a little history. This briefing is just to provide an update that was asked for back in June of 2019. In 2015, the city conducted a disparity study, and the disparity study did find that there was problems with subcontracting and contracting for minority and women-owned businesses here in the city. And so, in 2016, council by resolution adopted the results of the study, and committed the city to a policy to try to reduce some of these disparities. And what I want to do is, this is the first set of goals that we did back in 2016. We are still following those goals right now, and I just wanted to give you an idea of what was the goals recommended by the study in 2016. Okay, what we've done to date, in order to make sure that we are achieving what we need to achieve, what we've required for all bidders to have, if there's a minority business subcontractor opportunity in all of our bids, we're requiring them, A, to have a minority subcontractor. We're requiring them to, B, say that they have attempted to reach out to minority businesses, to get businesses there. And if they have the signed form that they want to perform the work, it still doesn't stop them from giving us a good faith effort that we are now monitoring. We currently utilize a database from the Commonwealth of Virginia, state-qualified, pre-qualified vendors. The state has done a lot of work putting these things together, and so we do, for some of our minor projects, we just go ahead and go straight to that list and use some of those companies that are pre-qualified from the state. For outreach, we've conducted two workshops. We've done one at the Renaissance, and one down at Bythewe. In addition, we've attended the annual Virginia Beach Minority Business Council that was held in November. Okay, in our construction-related projects, here is the breakdown of some of the numbers. The first, number one, is the pre-qualified vendor list. Again, we go to companies to get work done, and we just go ahead and ask them to come in and do work for us. So that's the numbers that we have for fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 2019. The second part is our construction side. This is our subcontracting, you know, business. We, you know, our percentages are there, and this is what we've done to date. And again, this is fiscal year 18 figures and fiscal year 19 figures. And please feel free to ask any questions as I go through, in case, the numbers are like that. We also have annual services contracts with service contractors. And for the previous two years, for fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 2019, here are the numbers that we actually are using for minority businesses, for not service-related industries. The future. Okay, we're -- The future. Okay, we're continuing to grow. We update our database on a regular basis to keep track of companies in the area. We still go, we partner with Virginia Beach and other local governments to have, you know, we have organizational meetings and we also have workshops and things with other places. We are still trying to leverage our business opportunities electronically, using social media, things like that, making sure that we get the word out to folks. The staff has been excellent during this program because I couldn't do this without our staff here at the city. They're the support bases that keep this thing rolling. And the last bullet I want to say is, as we continue to do this, we're looking to see how we can improve. Some of the opportunities that we have that we're not getting business from, we need to look at those and make sure we do everything we can to change the mindset. So that's number five. That's an important bullet for us. And with that, any questions?
Questions, Paul?
Turn back to the last set of figures, right there.
Right.
The one that you just left.
Oh.
What number is the total amount of business that we've subbed out in reference to that number?
Oh, for this one?
Yeah.
There's no subs in this one. This is an actual contract with minority business in our service industries. Service industry
What I mean is, what is the, I'm sorry, I must not be making myself clear.
Sure.
What is the total amount of the contracts that we sub out in reference to this number?
Okay, sir. These are prime contractors. There's no sub activities there. These are minority prime contractors.
Now.
Oh, yes, sir.
I must not be
Okay.
Doing a good job. They're not, they don't have sub work. These are the contractors. What number is that in reference to other contractors?
Non-minority contractors.
Correct.
Oh, I can get that number for you. I don't have it off the top of my head. Okay, now, I'm sorry. No, no.
Okay.
All right, I'll get that for you.
Communicate it through.
You want to know what our total contract number is as compared to this?
Yes, sir.
Got you.
What percentage is that of the total?
Oh, yes, sir.
Well, the number.
Right.
I'll get the percentage.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Have we ever, as a city, tried to do any kind of outreach within known businesses in the city and try to go to them and explain to them how to get pre-qualified on the state list?
No, sir, we haven't, but that's a good idea.
Because that's what I was thinking. Maybe we could go to some businesses we know that we have in our city that we're not taking advantage of and assist them in getting pre-qualified. So when something comes up, they're already there, so we could utilize those businesses.
That's a good idea. We'll take that and add it.
Portsmouth?
I know the school, the Portsmouth Public School System does, has done that.
Yes.
Because I can't be on the city's list, the school system has reached out to me, to my business, and about every one of the events and workshops and things that they have. And the city of Virginia Beach does a very good job of reaching out to, my business is SWAM certified and I get stuff from Virginia Beach probably monthly. Lots of times, it has nothing to do with what I sell, but they still reach out.
Right. It's a good idea.
And just to add to what Elizabeth was saying, Gwen Davis does a very good job of having an event. Most recent one was a couple of months ago. They had the folks there from the state of Virginia that handled the SWAM certifications. So they're there to help them and it's a hands-on event. A lot of vendors and people, business owners do attend those events. And the city does sponsor those events, so it does help those individuals to get and gain the information needed to become SWAM certified, as my firm is as well.
Yes, sir. Just to piggyback on what I said, that's our goal to, you know, we partner with the schools on most things they do, they partner with us on things that we do. So we have a real good collaborative effort.
You do.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ammons?
You're welcome.
We'll have Mr. Daniel Jones to come forward with Smart.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. This presentation this evening is going to be geared around the holistic view of Smart Portsmouth. So some of the presentation will look familiar. This is part of the presentation that we presented at your last city council retreat in 2019. So I've updated some of the information just by closing out 2019 and how data has changed in the progression for the Smart Portsmouth. So just to quickly review, we'll go over what is a smart city, a smart world or a connected world. Of course, data is the new currency, the current Smart Portsmouth task, Smart Portsmouth best practices, and then of course, our next steps. So a smart city is one municipality that uses information and communication technologies, or ICT, to enhance the quality and operation of the urban services. It increases the city's economic competitiveness, sustainability, and the quality of life. And this is just the view of the smart world concept. As you can see, everything that happens within a municipality is connected in some way, whether that's the economic, whether that's technology, whether it's service rendering, whatever it may be, it all connects in some way in that there's data being passed. So familiarity, just with Portsmouth, you have the shipping industry, you've got your public safety, public utilities. We don't have no nuclear reactor, but beside that point, it's pretty much applies. So you've seen this slide at your city council retreat. So when you first seen it, there was 40,000 searches per second on Google. They rounded out the year, that increased to 75,000 searches.
Per second?
Per second. So YouTube videos, 2018, 4.1 million. The end of 2019, it was gauged at 4.5. So you're talking 400,000 up change on YouTube videos. 16 million text messages, 2018, it's up to 18.1. And then the last bullet, I'll save just a second, but you can see the increasing trend in data usage and data transmission. So, and that's just in a matter since, well, February of 2019, so coming up on a year. So if you look at the data transmission, what's it going to be in five years, 10 years even? It's going to be an astounding number. So the last bottom line is 1 million Twitch videos. So just to familiarize yourself around Twitch, Twitch is a streaming service where individuals will stream themselves playing games or doing DJs or performing DJs.
DJs.
As you mentioned to me, I'll elaborate.
I never knew what Twitch was, but on Sunday, I'm from Florida, and my sister called me and said, I just sent you a link on Messenger, there's this DJ. And so when I went on there, I was astounded that there were 1.3 million people listening to this DJ. There were so many comments coming from all over the world. The hearts of love, the whatever, the whatever. And I came back and I asked Mr. Jones, how did he do this? And he says, Doc, that's the Twitch. Now you can, you know, go on, you can be in your house and you can have whatever you're going to do. And people, you have a notification, you're doing it, and people just log on and see what's going on. It's amazing.
But that's geared around what is now referred to as esports, so electronic sports. So your Madden's, your Madden tournaments, your NBA tournaments that people are competing, they're getting offered scholarships to universities to play video games. As far out as that sounds, but that is, that is the future in which we currently live.
Say that again.
Yes.
It is the future that we currently
Currently live.
Right.
So as the research covers of what smart city strategies could encompass, you have strategic priorities, your economic development and civic engagement, sustainable urban planning administration, your data-driven public safety, resilient energy and infrastructure, and intelligent transportation. And you can see just what examples of programs would fall under those priorities. And then as it keeps getting built out with use cases, smart city and IOT and ICT all folds under, whether it's the Internet of Things, IOT, or the ICT, the communications technology, of how that, all that connects to make a smart city and data passage. So the current Smart Portsmouth task, we've got resiliency plans within the emergency departments, utilities, engineering, planning, and technology. Connectivity plans, as we presented to you, the connectivity study, the fiber mastering, network instruction, transportation plans, the bike pedestrian, the shared mobility and the traffic analysis, the poverty studies, sustainability, wages and health, and of course, data aggregation that we're beginning, which would involve data mining, analytics, and data decisions. So the Portsmouth, Smart Portsmouth best practices, the key one is the smart city maturity. Where are we on the maturity scale? Where do we, what is our next steps? What do we need to move forward at? The connected Internet of Things, your IOT, to keep expanding that through sensors, through the networks, through integrated technology. Community engagement, how do we engage our external stakeholders and not just our internal stakeholders? Social listening, as we start to aggregate this, start to use the listening within the IOT to see how we can do that engagement. And then of course, a gap analysis is, that goes back to our maturity. Where are we lacking in certain areas that we can improve on and fill those gaps? And this one, even though these last two are listed under best practices, they are best practices to avoid. So this is on the list that should not be part of best practices. So islands of innovation, that's where you have innovation taking place in various different sectors, but they're not part of the strategic vision of a smart city. So it's being innovated just to be innovative. And that's what you want to avoid. If it doesn't fit within a strategic vision, what is its purpose? And then of course, failure to scale goes into islands of innovation. So if you're innovating something or producing something that doesn't scale to the maturity of a smart city or be able to work in an enterprise environment, that is something that you want to avoid.
Daniel, that first bullet, how is your assessment of our maturity?
We are, a percentage are next steps, because there's, and I can provide another slide as we go along and other presentations of certain areas of where a smart city will be, whether it's determination or connectivity, or not connectivity. I have, I wish I had put that in there. But where we are now, we need to really focus holistically on what Smart Portsmouth should be. And that's my next topic. So as we continue, we'll be bringing more presentations back as to, with regards to Smart Portsmouth and how that is made up. But we would like your feedback to say, where do we start or where do we continue the Smart Portsmouth? Because eventually, it's going to continue to outgrow as it should, as it matures, to where it's going to reach beyond the initial inside of the city. It's going to reach out to the communities, to the external stakeholders. So what does that include? Is that just a smart city working group? Is that a commission? Is that a committee? What is that? And that's what I think our next big step has to be determined. Because you need to form that strategic overall master vision of what we want Portsmouth to be and to really transition to a smart Portsmouth. Does that answer your question?
In a way, it does. A qualitative answer would have been okay.
Okay.
How do we, on a, on the maturity scale, how do we, how do we compare with other cities in the region and other localities in the state?
Okay.
And a qualitative answer is okay.
Qualitative answer. That's hard to give a qualitative because there's certain activities that we're doing better than other localities. And there's definitely certain qualities that other localities are doing better than we are. So that's where I would say a qualitative, we're in the middle. We're, you know, you're 40 to 60% qualitative to me. There's definitely room for improvement on both sides. That's where we have to work towards the gap analysis. We have to identify what the vision is and what does Smart Portsmouth mean to everyone. You know, you can use the overarching term of a smart city, but that's just, that's like, you know, blanketing paint, more or less. We have to really define what a smart city means to Portsmouth, not just to be a smart city.
And we're really talking about big data here. Are we going to have the internal structure, both in people and in infrastructure, to process the big data and make it either understandable or predictive?
And that's where
That's almost a rhetorical question.
At the bottom, the data aggregation with data mining, analytics, and data decision. Right now, the city has a good amount of data just by fault of being a city. You know, there's tax records, there's all kinds of data that comes in. But to really start to mine that data, to put it together with other areas, to mine it, to analyze it, there's where it starts to come into play. And that's what we need to look for as part of the vision of transforming to a real, true smart city.
Doctor Pat?
Question I would ask, Mr. Jones, you came to us in January 4th of 2016. Coming in 2016, all you found and all you have addressed, from a scale from one, where we were when you came in, where have you taken, well, we know you've taken us to building toward a small city, all the things in between that you have had to address for us to even get to moving, where would you say we are, scale from one
How long is the scale, one, five to 10?
I said one to 10.
Okay.
Once again, I think we're probably in the middle, a four to six range, five somewhere through there. Because we've done a lot of the foundational work.
Yeah, and you had to do that too.
Stuff that you really don't see.
Yeah.
But you can't do steps seven and eight till you get four, five, and six.
Yes.
So there's the key that we've taken care of that. We've done the foundation. We got the brick and the mortar up. Now you're starting to see the walls, the kitchen, things of that nature, to use a comparative analysis.
Lisa?
In relation to the data collection compared to the city maturity, I saw the data that's been collected and the increases that we've done in just one year. Are we, where we need to be to maintain more growth and increase in the next year? I mean, it won't be where we get to a point and then we're going to have to redo the whole, you know, or add more broadband or add more fiber. So we, our growth is keeping up with what our data collection is matching.
With specifics to the network and the data collection, as we started, we future-proofed the network. That was our goal. This is a carrier grade. This is what would be put in to sustain if we were to offer connection to all the citizens, that it doesn't need to be upgraded. Like I said, I would love to come back and present to you that we're maxed out. Because for us to be maxed out, we would have to be transporting 2.4 terabits of data.
The way I see it is that the problem is not going to be the infrastructure, that sprigs and water, the cable, the fiber. It's going to be our internal capacity and ability to process the data and use it in a predictive way.
Right. Exactly. And that is where you can also use technology. You have certain manpower, but then you also have analytical models and software that you can ingest data into to find commonalities and patterns and connections, aggregation tools. So there still has to be a set of eyes that overlooks. But now you can use, and I'll use a public safety term, a force multiplier now with software, that you can ingest a whole lot of software, just as we do from a security standpoint to be able, just keep ingesting it and then start to look for commonalities.
Bill?
There'll be a point in time, obviously, with the ownership of a lot of data, not only ours, but other people who own the system. What are we going to do with that? Because like Google and some others, they sell and market that data.
Because like Google and some others, they sell and market that data. Is that part of the overall plan?
No. Not to profit from data, even though that that is a profitable model that the private industry uses.
And I ask that because I'm certain we'll get inquiries about that. And maybe, maybe there's some that we could market and profit from. Just throwing that out, that might be something that we want to continue to look at with way premature is that point now, but I would think at some point in time, we might want to see where we want to go with that, since we have, we'll have ownership or certainly stewardship of it.
And I would say not necessarily that approach, but one other best practice approach we've seen is the profiting or the using of the data to make the decisions that then makes the city profitable. So if it's having businesses or economic move into Portsmouth because of X, Y, and Z, we knew that because we saw data that proved X, Y, and Z. We didn't sell X, Y, and Z, but we know X, Y, and Z was the key components to have them here.
This is somewhat related. What's the status of the private sector's implementation of small cell technology in Hampton Road?
The industry there is, that I'm aware of, there's a couple of locations in the beach right around town center that has the small cell, the true small cell. But the issue, there is one phone that exists that's able to transmit the bandwidth that a small cell provides, and that requires an add-on antenna to the back of the phone to be able to receive that, and a increased data plan for that all to work. So is anybody actually taking advantage of this? I would hardly doubt it.
Other questions?
So as we said, just coming back, we would like your feedback as to what you would see the SMART Portsmouth progressing towards. Like I said, it's a working group, commission, committee, and our next step has to be to get a strategic SMART city master plan underway. And that's more than one department, that's more than three or four departments, that's the city as a whole. That's internally, that's externally, that's communities, everybody that has a stake in the city of Portsmouth. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Other questions? Yes.
I'm having this analogy to a chicken in every pot. Do you want every five-year-old to have access to the internet to do their schoolwork? You know, is that a goal?
Eventually, they will.
I will say, if they don't have access to the internet, then they're going to be left behind.
They're going to be left behind.
They will be left behind.
Yes.
But it's more than that. It's more, it's, in addition, it's putting sensors like in manholes so that you know what happens to that particular manhole on a rain event. Yeah, it's putting sensors, maybe even in parking meters, so you know the frequency that someone may park on a particular block.
Correct. It's air quality, it's trash cans, it's GPS.
Even the sensors are flooding now that we're putting...
Correct.
That's the news.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Now we'll have Mr. Wright to come forward, City Chief Engineer, with the two profligate revitalization.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. I have two renderings for you tonight. They represent an investment in what we can be, the new experience downtown. The roundabout by City Hall is the gateway to downtown. It sits at the beginning of our arts district. The rendering that you see before you incorporates the jubilation statue from Willett Hall. The statue is elevated in the center of the roundabout and surrounded by a tiered water feature with landscaping around the perimeter. The water feature also includes uplighting to enhance the nighttime experience. It is feasible that this lighting can be programmable to convey holidays similar to the lights along the new seawall sections. The Breeden Company and the city both remain committed to a signature project at this roundabout. We have not developed a cost scenario for this yet, but the jubilation statue, we already own. City Council's already allocated funds for the base, the foundation for the prior project. Those funds would need to be reallocated. It is anticipated that with the current funding commitment from Breeden and what we have on board, that those funds should be sufficient for this project.
I think it's beautiful.
It is beautiful. And I assume the upkeep will be better than that grass and...
Very much public art.
Yeah, it is.
It's right there at the...
Still.
...area, yeah.
All right, well, let's talk about next steps. Are we going to get to that?
Well, the Bredens, we've met with them and we've reported back that they are committed to funding the $100,000, and based on what this would cost, if it goes over that, Mr. Breeden said he would be interested in working with us to make this happen. They have this rendering before them also.
That's lovely.
It is.
So with your concurrence, we're ready to move to the next steps.
Yes.
Anybody got any heartburn?
No.
What's the, what would be the timeline?
We haven't developed a timeline yet. We can have that for you, probably tomorrow.
Let's restate that. A fast track.
You will get with...
Tomorrow.
Work out a timeline, okay.
Yeah. Can you go back? Or, yeah, Mr. Battle, that's the parking garage at City Hall on the right hand.
Yes, so this is the Breeden, all right. If I'm standing here, I'm standing right in front of the pavilion. This is Breeden here, this is parking garage in City Hall, and it's still left down Crawford.
You can see Wells Fargo in the far back, and then you can see the Town Bank Building. You good, Paul?
Yeah. Okay, in 2019, there were just over 9,200 active dog licenses expiring in the city.
How many?
9,200.
9,200, 9,000.
That's 10% of our population.
Well...
9,200.
We've got more dogs than tennis players.
9,200 licenses or registered.
It sounds like an low-dumber to me.
We thought that was very high.
So the city does not currently have a dog park. Dog owners across the city have been requesting public dog parks for several years. Last year, the city purchased and demolished the church...
10 years. Maybe more.
At 609 615 Washington that had become derelict. This site is approximately 0.14 acres and is ideal for a pocket dog park. This small park will provide a much-needed amenity for pet owners nearby within walking distance. Adjacent on-street parking is also available for those who are not within walking distance. The park green space will include benches, trees, a water source, pet waste stations, and appropriate fencing. There are currently funds for dog parks in the current CIP.
That's where the old church was?
Yes, ma'am.
It's Washington County, right?
Yes, sir.
That's county on the right.
Yeah, so this is Washington Street, and this is county right here.
And it's, it's, what did you say? How many acres?
Any problems?
Is there a small dog and a large dog area, or is it just one area?
Just one area.
I mean, we can...
I'm not a dog person, as you know, I just hear people talk about that.
There are options. This is still preliminary and in progress, but it shows just the major amenities. Some people have talked about an exercise little area for dogs as well, once we get a little bit more.
Hey, heard about that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Where do the cats go?
The cats still go? That's what I asked.
They've got to stay home.
That's where the trees are pulled.
Yes.
And the firemen pull up on the side.
Mayor, it's interesting you say that because Mrs. Simmons has been an advocate for a dog park back in 2007. And so when we were talking about the dog park, she said, and I don't even have dogs, I have two cats. So I don't think cats have a place to go.
It's called, their owners bad.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's...
That's fabulous.
Okay, fabulous. You good?
Yeah.
I'm good.
I like it.
Yes? Okay.
All right, we'll move forward. It's already in the CIP. It's been in there for some years.
All right.
Awesome. Some good news?
It's already budgeted.
They have a need for a closed session, right? Motion to go into closed session.
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711, 8.7, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city specifically regarding Michael A. Moore versus City of Portsmouth, Portsmouth Circuit Court case numbers 19003403, 19003277, and 19004481.
Sir, second.
Second.
A motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion of the motion? We're ready for the question. Please call the roll, please, for this vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. We're in closed session. Would you ask her, wait?